Good. Okay, well, welcome back to our budget hearings. Lauren, what's next?
We'll be starting this afternoon with the election office on page 50 of your binders, and Tabitha Layman is here to present.
Welcome, Commissioner Layman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Or afternoon, I guess it's afternoon. I am so sorry. I, you know, I kept thinking I'm going to do that, and then I did it. I should not have thought that. Well, we'll get started. I believe this might be my 10th budget presentation, and it will be my last. So it kind of, honestly, it's kind of fun. And I'm like, last one, so, you know. Okay, so we'll just jump in and get started, maybe. Here we go. So here's the org chart for the election office. It's kind of small there. And we do have about four vacant positions right now. We have, obviously, mine. It's technically not vacant, I suppose, but open. The deputy election commissioner position is open, and obviously, I've chosen not to fill that because that needs to be done by the next election commissioner. And then we have a couple of vacancies within our registration advance voting department. I just say that because it does matter coming into next year, having inexperienced individuals with redistricting. So I just, that does play into some of the budget requests I'm going to give you, so I just wanted to point that out. We are, well, this doesn't change. The only thing that has changed since, I don't know how many times I've given it, is the number of registered voters, and we are currently over 325,000 registered voters in Sedgwick County, which continues to be an all-time high. Challenges and opportunities that will be faced in 2022 will be a new election commissioner will be appointed here in just a couple of months. We have some new legislation, both at the state and federal levels. The federal level, I do not believe, is going to get passed. It will take support of about 10 Republican senators, and I don't believe that's there. However, I do serve on the federal legislative committee for the Election Center, which is the Association for Election Officials nationwide. And we've spent about two months working on HR1 and SR1. We did submit, the position of the Election Center is not to take a position on federal legislation, but we do provide feedback. HR1 was written without any input by election officials. So when it passed the House and it got to the Senate, we kind of inserted ourselves into the process a little bit and provided, I think, close to 200 line item of things that were problematic for election officials that don't work. There have been some amendments proposed because of that feedback from election officials, but just wanted to let you know that has been about the last two months that I've been spending working on that 800-page bill. So we are obviously going to continue to see cyber threats and continuing issues with that. We have redistricting next year, which only happens every 10 years, which you all know very well. We have delays in the census data, which will compress redistricting timelines, which you will see reflected in the budget request. And then we do have a constitutional amendment that has been placed on the primary ballot, and that will be discussed later on as well. Here's just our comparison from '21 to '22. Obviously, '21, this is the administration side of the budget. I apologize. I should have clarified that. '21 is actually the lowest budget year, or election year cost, things like that, that we have. And so '22 will be gubernatorial and redistricting, so you'll see that reflected in our decision packages. Our decision package number one, hold down, hold down, because I've got like six of them, so I apologize. I am sorry, but I believe they're necessary. So that will be in pages 65 and 66. We currently have two part-time, permanent part-time employees in the election office that we are just requesting that we take those two permanent part-times and make them one permanent full-time. And the reason we're doing that is because it is difficult for us to keep those positions filled. Most people are continuing, either it's a, we get a college student who has to have very unique hours to work, or we get people who are continuing to look for full-time employment. It's a lot of turnover, difficult to keep them employed or trained. But more importantly, they cannot work any overtime, and that is very difficult for us in an election season when we have people that can't work overtime. So you'll see that request here. The next one is actually just for another full-time position, and this is a higher pay grade than the other one. One of the things that was very clear last year when I was out of the office was that there is just simply not enough higher-level staff in the office trained to manage all the temporary staff. And so we, what I would like to do is set up the next person for greater success, if that makes sense, to have. If we have people who are able to be more cross-trained, then they can, it's not on one or two people to manage all the temporary staff that come in, and then we can actually be more efficient with time. And there was a significant amount of overtime worked last year, as I'm sure you're all aware. Decision package three is additional funding, just to cover gubernatorial elections. This covers, we had, let me see, in this cost center, we have, we purchased an additional ballot envelope printer in 2020 because of COVID, and that has additional costs associated with it. This is just all kinds of costs that are associated with gubernatorial election and redistricting. And I have a very detailed page and a half. If you guys would like me to email this to you, I'm more than happy to do that, so you have a better breakdown of understanding what additional funds are for. More than happy to do that, so I don't have to go through all of that ad nauseam at the moment. So this then would be the total for decision packages in 66001, which would be our administrative side. And then we get to the operations side. All of this information is the same as administrations, and all of our challenges and opportunities are the same. We will get into that budget request, and you'll see this has increased. We will have increased personnel hours with election workers, but you will also see that we are also requesting additional funding for that as well in decision packages. So this first decision package, which would be on pages 61 and 62, and please stop me if I'm going too fast. I just don't want to waste your time. But this, we have redistricting, and we are required by federal and state law to send a notice to a voter if their districts have changed or if their polling place has changed. If I look back at 2012, this is worst-case scenario. This is if we had to send this to every single registered voter. So we went back and we looked at 2012 when we had redistricting, and at that time, there were 267-plus thousand registered voters, and we had to send notices to 252,000. So it was pretty close to 100% of voters that we had to send this to. However, it is my recommendation with this, because we don't know an exact amount of this, that potentially this money just be set aside in contingency funding or something like that. Instead of it being added to the budget, it just be there and earmarked in case it's needed, and because we don't know the exact amount. To me, this makes more sense to do something like that. But I did not want the next election commissioner blowing their budget and having to explain to you all because I didn't do my job while I was still here. So I wanted you to be aware of this potential expense. Well, it's not potential, but I don't know how much expense it will be. Decision package two, which you'll see on pages 63 and 64, is voting machine battery replacements. This is the normal cycle of the voting machines, that this is the time it's supposed to be done. This was part of the, when we acquired the voting machines, that five years in, which it's very hard to believe it's been five years, but it has. However, I would just like to just, I'll give this a little bit of explanation as well. If I were staying, I would not be asking for this money this year, because we have seen zero issues with the voting machine batteries failing. We also have additional 100 machines that were procured last year. So for 2022, we have enough extra voting machines that if one has a problem, we can deploy a new one. However, this is the recommendation from the vendors and from the industry. So I wanted this to be brought to you, and this to be your decision on how you want to handle this. I know this is a challenging budget year, so, you know, again, I want to set everyone up for success next year. I do not anticipate that we're going to start losing those batteries. We have adhered very, very well to the vendor's standards on charging the machines every, I think it's like every three months, to make sure those batteries stay viable as long as possible. But again, this is the recommendation of the vendor and industry that they be replaced on a five-year cycle. Again, if you wanted to maybe earmark something in, now I've lost, I will apologize. Chemo is very hard on your brain. Contingency funds, I knew it would come to me. About the time I admit to my failings, the word comes to me. So in case it's needed, that would be fine, but it does have to be done before the next presidential election. And our maintenance agreement with the vendor is every other year, so they're serviced in even-numbered years. So if we don't do it in '22, it can be done in '24, but it has to be done. And my recommendation, very strong recommendation, it would have to be done before 2024. So on to the next. This is just adding increased workload for the gubernatorial election. This decision package will be on pages 70 and 71. This would be, if you recall back, you may not, but if you recall back when we did the budget for 2020, we actually added more temporary staff for the office in 2020, and boy, was that ever needed. None of us knew what we were going to walk into in 2020, I'm sure. But with redistricting, we will again need that additional seasonal staff in our office. But then, because we have the constitutional amendment on the ballot in the primary, this is going to create more, we are going to have to do more in-depth training of our election workers because it increases the ballot styles by a third, because instead of just having a Republican, a Democrat ballot, now we have an unaffiliated ballot as well. So when a voter comes in, they're not just presented with you must affiliate. They're presented with you can stay unaffiliated, vote on one thing, or affiliate and get, you know, so it's going to take, slow down check-in, it's going to slow down training. It's going to add that time for, so with having a third more ballot styles, it adds a third to proofing. It adds a third to pretty much everything we do, testing and preparing voting machines. It adds a third to a lot of things. So that is just something that I wanted to make sure we had reflected in our budget request. And additionally, because it's going to create more time and explanation for those board workers, we felt it was better to have one more board worker at each site for the primary so that we don't have lines forming, because we don't have enough staff to make the explanation to voters. Again, just remind you that in 2020, we saw a significant amount of people vote by mail in the primary, and that is not something we've ever seen. And hopefully, we will not have the need for that because of pandemic in '22. And so the bulk of people will vote on Election Day in the primary. I'm just looking at my notes to make sure. I would also mention on the need for increase in poll workers and election workers. We have increased the number of registered voters by 25,000 since 2018, and we have added 10 polling places since that election as well. So you'll see that reflected in these budget request numbers as well. So our next one is additional funding for the gubernatorial. I kind of touched on this. Partially with redistricting and with the Kansas constitutional amendment, we anticipate that the constitutional amendment will increase turnout for the primary election. And as I explained, it will increase the amount of time it will take us to prep and test voting machines, ballot proofing, all of those things, as well as potentially more ballot by mail, but nothing like we saw in 2020, I don't believe. We have also been, I have been told, I mean, we also know that we are not getting the census data. We should have already had it, and we don't have it. The legislature doesn't have it yet. That means that our deadlines don't move, but we have, the election office will have significantly less time to process that census data. So again, you'll see that reflected in this information. But also, I have had multiple legislators tell me that they anticipate that we will end up with the courts drawing our maps again, instead of the legislature doing it, which if that happens, that's what happened in 2012. We got those maps, I think it was Thursday or Friday night, at like 11:30, and the extended filing deadline was that Monday. And it was just not great. So let me go on to the next slide. So these are all of our decision packages for the operations side. Again, if you look at those top two, those are ones that I would just recommend, if that is your will, to set aside in contingency funds, so that if they need to be spent, they are there. But then they're not necessarily in elections budget and only designated for elections to spend, because they may not be needed. So here is our summary. And summary of all of our decision packages, which looks very scary. And then questions. Anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to reflect a little bit on your election career. How long have you been here at Sedgwick County doing this?
As election commissioner, nine-plus years at the election office for just shy of 13.
13 years.
Don't ask too much, or I'll start crying.
I'm just thinking, and I know you've given us comparisons to other counties in the past. I know that we're very efficient in what we do, and I just want to say, I think you've done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
I know the world's going to say, yeah, but he's related to her. That's true. She's my sister-in-law, for just full disclosure, but I'm still impressed. I think you've still done a great job, and I think you're going to be sorely missed. Thank you for all you do.
Thanks.
I think that that's all the questions. I just want to point out how incredible your hair looks.
Thank you. It's great, isn't it? I'm so glad I didn't lose my curls. I would have cried if I lost my curls. I'm not going to lie.
Well, I don't see any other questions. Thank you for all you've done for Sedgwick County. You will be missed, so.
Well, I'm probably not going away, but we'll have to see, so. Yep. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. All right, Lauren, what's next?
Next, we'll be hearing from the county appraiser, Mark Clark, and will be on page 130 of your binders.
Good afternoon, Mark.
Good afternoon. How are you today?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. It's there somewhere.
Looks like the file is on the desktop, is what Mr. Tony tells us.
Yeah, that one's not working very well. No, you're fine. It's not your fault.
Good afternoon. Mark Clark, county appraiser. I'm going to discuss the 2022 budget request today. According to Kansas statutes and Kansas Constitution, a county appraisers are defined fair market value, and those values are to be fair and equal. Looking at the Appraisers' Org chart, you see five divisions with 66 employees. The mission statement of the County Appraisers' Office is to annually produce a fair and equitable appraisal role used in the formulation for the funding of quality public services in our community. The Appraisers' Office funding and services. The Appraisers' Office is 100% property tax-funded, and services are provided to mass appraisal assignments in Kansas for Avalon taxation under the responsibility, is under the responsibility of county government. County commissioners are identified as the clients when they appoint the county appraiser. Intended users of the mass appraisal include the state of Kansas and all property tax and jurisdictions located within Sedgwick County. There are approximately 110 taxing jurisdictions. Who do we serve? Well, we serve all property owners in Sedgwick County, external data users such as Zillow and Realtor.com, research and analysis companies, third-party appraisers, and financial and lending institutions. All of the, all of this work is accomplished internally by the appraisal staff. What challenges do we see and opportunities on the horizon for the next five years? Well, we'll be formalizing the Appraisers' Office strategic plan. That'll be a five-year plan. Implementation of the IWA audit findings. Succession planning, something we've talked a great deal about. Attracting and retaining qualified personnel, that's always a challenge. Compliance with PVD's standards. Tracking key legislative issues that affect the Appraisers' Office, and monitoring and evaluating appraiser processes impacted by the Amintum Tax software and moving forward with necessary software and technology upgrades. The Appraisers' Office 2022 budget request for 2022. Personnel, $4,615,459. That is a reduction of 1.06%. Contractuals, $227,523. That is a reduction of 0.22%. Commodities, $84,797. That is a no change. Total budget request is $4,927,779, excuse me, $4,927,779 for a reduction of 1%. Decision package number one, and we have two decision packages. You can see this on page 137 to 225. This is for a chief deputy appraiser's position. All Appraiser staff will report to the chief deputy, with the exception of the county appraiser. This is needed because we are actively engaging in sustainability, and this is an important step in that direction. The requested funding is for $108,073. Decision package number two, you can see this, page 256 through 260. Requesting two additional FTEs, one senior personal property appraiser, and one senior residential appraiser. The objective of this decision package is to request funding for adequate personnel to maintain efficient control of appraisal processes and to ensure effective quality control and sustainability in the main duties of discovering, listing, and valuing properties. Funding of additional personnel will also enable the Appraisers' Office to implement a strategic plan that allows for rigorous quality assurance, increased production levels, and a sustainability plan that will prepare the Appraisers' Office to sustain itself over the long term, perpetuating the ability to fulfill the office mission. Funding of this request will also assist the office in achieving more uniform and fair valuations, thereby satisfying constitutional and statutory responsibilities. This request is supported by the findings of the Appraisers' Office Audit, completed by the International Association of Assessing Officers. This is for two FTEs. Funding request is $132,753. The Appraisers' Office decision packages, there are two, for a total of three FTEs, and the budget, total budget request is for $240,826. Division summary. For the Appraisers' Office 2022 budget request, it is $4,927,779 for a change, a reduction of 1%. I'll stand for any questions, Commissioners.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Well, Mark, I do believe that we need to have succession planning, so I definitely support your decision package number one. So I think that that is appropriate. And for the last four years, as I've gone through these budget hearings, we've heard that you need a couple more people in the Appraisers' Office, so I truly don't have any problem with either one of your decision packages. One of the things that I appreciate about the way that you run the office is that I get a lot of questions. I'm sure the other Commissioners get a lot of questions also. People don't really understand the process. I try and explain it to them a little bit, but I'm not real good at it. But I forward it over to you, and you always provide a great answer to the public so that they truly understand what we're doing, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Commissioner Howe, did you have a question?
No, I just want to say thank you for your work as well. I think you did a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe.
I don't see any other questions, Mark. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, while Mark is leaving the podium, I just want to, I want to thank him for working with us in the budget. He's got three issues that, over the next few years, we need to take a look at. One of them is staffing, and he actually had a staffing request that came in higher than the two he's asking for. And he understands with the rest of us, we can't fix this all in one budget year, so he's modified his request down to two. His chief deputy is important to him and to the Commission, so we see that as a priority as well. He's got some software issues that we're going to look more totally organizationally at. And he's also got fleet issues, which he has put in a decision package for, but we backed that out because we're going to do a larger fleet analysis of the organization. And his, but he has challenges there as well. So he's always good to work with, and he understands that we have a tight budget and has modified his decision packages back, and I just wanted to thank him for that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Mark.
Next, we'll be on page 262 of your binders for the County Treasurer's Office. I believe Randy Bargdell will be presenting. We're a couple minutes ahead, so they should be here any second.
That's going to, yeah.
Randy coming?
Yeah.
Linda, there's head up.
It's okay, Commissioners. Can I take this opportunity to steer you toward your email? The American Rescue Plan Act guidance has come out. It's this lovely 150-page document I have here in front of me. So it's one day early. Yes, God bless them. So we'll be looking at that pretty closely. Already, there are, related to the email that Justin sent you earlier today and also over the weekend, related to the state setting aside of our 35% of ARPA funding, there's already some issues that we can see coming up in this guidance. So just highlighting that for you.
Oh, Ms. Randy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Randy Bargdell, and I'll be presenting on behalf of the County Treasurer, Lynda Kazire. This is a complete overview of the entire department, the Treasurer's Department. And as you all know, the Treasurer wears two hats, in charge of the tax collection and also the motor vehicle efforts that we provide to the citizens of Sedgwick County. Today, I'm going to be discussing the tax department, which is funded by General Fund. Got to get caught up here. Sorry. I made a run for it this afternoon. So our mission in the Treasurer's Tax Office is to provide honest, friendly service while being accountable to the citizens of Sedgwick County through the timely collection and distribution of public funds in accordance with legislative mandates. Services we provide, there's one thing I've learned since I've been at the Treasurer's Office. We bill, we collect, and we distribute the tax monies that come in. Our tax bills are created internally through the help of ITS, as well as our own folks here. We're slowly but surely taking over that process of creating the bills within our own office. The bills are then printed, both from our print shop. They do some of the stuff that our vendor can't do, like our prepay coupons and things like that. But for the most part, we upload those tax bills to an outside printing firm. The taxes are then collected internally, primarily when people mail them in or they come down in person. They can pay online. And now we also have a Dropbox that allows citizens to come in. Additionally, during the tax period, we'll install a couple of boxes at the tag offices, so if people prefer to come into a tag office and drop off their so if people prefer to come into a tag office and drop off their taxes, they can do that as well. We also use InTrust Bank's lockbox for about three weeks usually to help, help collect those taxes and get that money in the bank as soon as possible, and then we distribute that money internally through our tax system and our internal bookkeepers and accountants, and we're distributing now to over a hundred taxing authorities. Here we have, pretty much, we don't have any decision packets or anything like that. Budget came down and said that they recommended that we, that one point, one million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, which appears to be a point one-six percent decrease in what the 2021 was. Our contractuals and commodities remain the same for quite some time. Bottom line is that we're, this is what they recommended, and we're happy with it. We don't have anything, any, any concerns or anything like that. We should be able to easily run the operation for that. It's very simple. Before I, before I turn it over for any questions, I received an email earlier today, very good recommendation by Commissioner Howell regarding kind of a state-of-the-tag office situation. Because of COVID, you know, we had a lot of varying departures from the way that we did our business. So one of the questions is, is that, you know, are there any grace periods that are still remaining, and no, there are not. By the end of last year, all of the title and renewal graces set forth by the governor has expired. During that whole period of time, COVID time, the tag offices never shut down, we always had staff, we was always providing a service to the residents of Sedgwick County. They, you know, though we encouraged people to mail it in and online, and we've got some drop boxes to not come into the tag office, we still remained open. The virtual waiting system that we have, we found out is very, very effective. We shut it down for about a month and a half during a period of time when the executive orders were that you could only have, you know, ten people in the building or twenty people in the building. We shut it down because it became more of a hassle in regards to people trying to sign in and then becoming disgruntled because they couldn't ever get in line, because the waiting line was only open for like fifteen minutes during the morning, and then anybody else couldn't get in line. And at that time, we switched over to a call-ahead, take appointments for title work situation, and that worked out pretty well. We were down for about a month and a half on the, on the virtual waiting line, but it is now up and running and has been for quite some time. Both offices are open, they never closed, so both the Kellogg and the Douglas office are open. And last thing I have here is the, the tag kiosks. We have been, about every two weeks, we have a Zoom meeting with our folks up in K-Door. They've been working on, on getting the data going. To my knowledge, right now, the kiosks themselves, two of them, are being branded, painted, you know, with the Sedgwick County logos. We're working on what the words are going to say when people come up, you know, to also indicate that they're in Sedgwick County, and instructions and whatnot. But the main component was receiving the data from K-Door, which we are actively working with. We have sign-on now, we've been able to work between the vendor, K-Door, and our internal folks have been able to process some of that data. So they're telling us now, maybe by the end of June, we'll have two kiosks that are ready to deploy. We'll be reaching back out to the cities, that being Goddard and Hayesville, to see if there's still an interest. I know that Hayesville, last time I visited with them, they were pretty much still in lockdown mode, and they wasn't allowing anybody to come in there. I need to reach out to them again and find out where we're at. But if that be the case, we're going to deploy those in those two cities, kind of as a ninety-day project, a pilot project, and make a determination then as to how many more we're going to order, if there's still an interest by the Commission to order more, where those might go. If we're not successful in being able to deploy those in those cities because of COVID right now, then we'll probably go ahead and deploy those in our tag offices for, you know, for a time, just to get them up and running, get the citizens of Sedgwick County knowing what that's all about and how to, how to operate those, so. With that little state of the, did I cover everything, Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you for the friendly discussion, and yes, you did a very good job today, thank you.
Okay.
And by the way, I may not get a chance later on to say, but Lynda's done a great job, and we're going to miss her. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from our Register of Deeds, Tanya Buckingham, and we'll be on page forty-six of your binders.
Hello, Tanya, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good to see you, everybody.
I'm having a hard time here, Tanya. Did you name it? Let's see.
Good afternoon, Tanya Buckingham, Register of Deeds. The Register of Deeds mission is to provide timely, secure, accurate, archival, accessible services to those that have entrusted us with these duties. We are responsible for storing, maintaining, and preserving all land records and other official documents with the highest level with integrity and professional conduct. This is the organizational chart for our office. On the left-hand side in blue, you'll see a department application manager, an archive supervisor, and all those that report to them. All of these employees are paid out of the technology fund. All other employees on this organizational chart are actually paid under the general fund. We work with the public, several departments within the county, other Kansas counties, attorneys, banks, and title companies searching for real estate records. Our in-house software program provides a single location in which all transactions pertaining to real estate are recorded. We are the starting point for all real estate documents. All these documents are filed and stored in our office and then shared with other land records departments. Some documents include deeds, mortgages, easements, plat, surveys, and any documents that affect real estate. We record approximately eighty-five percent of our documents electronically. During the COVID shutdown, we continue to provide our services without interruption. All of our employees were able to work from home and maintain the integrity of our office. And as you can see in this graph, the number of pages from 2019 to 2020 changed drastically, and that's the column that's in blue. So the recording fees are collected based on the number of pages per each document filed. From January to April of this year, we're up twenty-four percent in deeds, forty-two percent in our e-recordings, and forty-one percent in total pages. So I don't know if this trend is going to continue for the remaining part of the year, but right now, we are up in every area in our department. The Property Activity Alert, this is a way for property owners or other interested parties to receive alert messages by email when a document's recorded in our office and indexed with a specific name. The service matches specific party-name data on recorded documents with requests made by the subscribers. Upfront Scanning is a new service that we implemented. All of our walk-in customers are able to file their documents and leave with it recorded within just a few minutes. We have had several attorneys pleased with how quickly we're able to process their documents and leave their originals in hand. The Veteran and Military Discount Program was established to encourage veterans to file their military discharge papers, and as an incentive, they receive a free military discount card to be used at participating vendors. Before we started this in 2019, we averaged about ten DD-214s filed every year, but since implementing this program in July of 2019, we have filed four hundred and forty-five DD-214s and recorded one thousand discount cards as of Friday. We've attended several off-site events, but our biggest event was the Veterans Expo that was held at the Mid-American All-Indian Center. During that event, we issued sixty, we issued one hundred and ninety-nine cards, and we filed sixty-seven DD-214s on that day. Veterans Day Parade, we're planning to attend again this year, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Dennis for inviting us to attend that event again, and we plan on issuing cards and filing DD-214s again. So in this slide here, you can see that Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner Howell both received their military discount card on that day, the first day that we actually started the program. And also, below Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner Howell is a picture of our veteran that came in on Friday, and she was our one thousandth veteran to receive her military discount card, which we're really excited about. In 2019, our office became a certified passport acceptance facility. You're probably wondering, why in the Register of Deeds would you do that? But other Register of Deeds throughout the state actually offered this service. So at the beginning of last year, we suspended the service due to COVID, but then we reopened back in October of 2020. Beginning in January of this year, we've seen an increase in passport applications from January to April. We've already collected eleven thousand, five hundred in additional revenue, and I'd like to say that we've been able to offer this service and still do our duties as a Register of Deeds without any additional staff. Our office recently had books preserved going back to the eighteen hundreds. These books were falling apart, the ink writing inside was starting to disappear. So in this slide, you can see a beautiful display showing what our books looked like before and after the preservation process. And just a side note, we actually just repaired seventy-one of those books that were falling In our office, we implemented a training program for all our employees. Each area that is covered has class material, videos, research projects to help retain the information. We found that these classes and videos are giving employees the tools to become successful. Everyone is cross-trained, so they can work in any area of the department. This also helps with staffing coverage while in the office. Currently, we have half of our e-recording and our customer service area working in the office, and the other half working remotely, which was also helpful during the pandemic. Today, we're still rotating this group every two weeks, working in the office, and two weeks working at home. We also created videos for the public on our website to increase awareness of the duties and functions of our office. A lot of people don't know what the Register of Deeds does, so this was very helpful. We also shared some of these videos on our Register of Deeds Facebook page. The video on our main page explains more about what our office does, why land records are kept permanently, and where your real estate legal descriptions come from. Our videos that we've placed on our webpage include learning more about early Register Deeds, women in the Register of Deeds, and the Billy the Kid connection. This shows our budget for 2022, one million, one seventy-one, eight eighty-nine. We do not have any decision, revenue, or alternate reduction packages. Just a brief overview of the Technology Fund. Since 2002, under KSA twenty-eight dash one-one-A, the Register of Deeds has transferred a total of five million, six thirty-eight, eight sixteen in Technology Fund to a county fund designated for equipment or technological services relating to property records filed or maintained by Cedric County. This year, we will be transferring another two hundred thousand. With this transfer, the grand total amount to the county will be five million, eight thirty-eight, eight sixteen. We have a future, a few projects that are happening in our, in our office. We have some current and our future projects. We're working with our wonderful D I T, am I saying that right, D I T? Is that the new acronym? To have the ability to add additional scanners at the front counter. Currently, we record the documents, and then we have to go scan it in this training room area. So right now, we're looking at having those at the front counter. Another project is we're wanting to enhance the Property Activity Alert. Right now, the subscriber will get an email alert, but we would like to have that done by a text message alert. We're also working with D I T on that. Future projects, we'd like to have our records online going back to the eighteen hundreds. Currently, our records are from nineteen sixty-eight to current. So after, during all of this COVID and pandemic, we realized that it was very important to have more of our records online available to title companies and attorneys and everyone that are doing the, the research. That is it, and I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Register of Deeds, Tanya?
Yes.
Thank you very much for what you do.
You're welcome.
Every time I go down to your office, I am met with the most cheerful people in this building. I appreciate it. It is a joy to go down, and I appreciate things like, that you come up that are innovative. I don't know if other counties do things like that, but the alert system works. I moved a lot of my property into a trust and got an alert that something was happening with my trust, with my property. That works great. I, as a veteran, Commissioner Howell and I, we appreciate the fact that you're looking out for our veterans and you're filing the DD-214s, which is so critical. And just today, I went down and I filed two DD-214s that belonged to my cousin. She recently passed away, and I was going through her personal effects, trying to find the information I need in order to be able to go and, and file some of her veterans' benefits and get tombstones and so forth. And I did find them, and I found one copy of each. She was reservist, and then she was active duty in Vietnam. And just the fact that I found one copy of each was fantastic, but I figured the best place to put them is in your office, and so they filed them today. And so, I don't know, it's, it's just one of the offices I enjoy going to visit. Thank you very much for what you do.
Well, thank you for that compliment, and that really is attributing to the staff that works there, so.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. So again, if someone files their DD Form 214, I believe they get five certified copies?
Yes.
And that's free, is that correct?
Yes, yeah. I mean, they could get more than five, but that's just a, a standard that we give, yeah. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think it's just a nice thing to note that. And then, if I wanted to get involved in the, the, the alert program for my, my, my property, how do I do that?
You go to our website, and there's a link for the Property Activity Alert. You just click on it, and it's very simple. All you're doing is putting in your email, and then whenever a document's filed using your name, you'll get an email alert with the link to go in there and actually the document number that it refers to.
So if I wanted, is it connected to the property that I own, or, or not? I mean, if I wanted to have an alert on my property, for example, could I do that as well?
In your name, yes.
And my name?
Yeah, and also, like, maybe you're, you have a, you know, your mom or something that doesn't have an email, you could have, watch her property and actually have the email go to you, you know?
Okay. And then, I know that, looking at the law, the wide sheet. And then, I know that, looking at the wide sheet, the mortgage registration fee, change per page fee, is very dynamic. It was $8 million back in '08. I think the lowest we saw on this is around $4 million in '19. It's back up in '20 on this sheet, at least over $6 million. Any comments about how that's impacting your office? Does it just impact the money that's available at the end of the year for transfer? I mean, transferred to the Technology Fund? How's this changed in your office in terms of the impact of that legislation?
As far as the elimination of the mortgage tax and then the... Actually, it's kind of hard to tell right now because we're actually bringing in more documents and more pages, which is out of the ordinary. And so, there's been more revenue coming in that we actually had planned, that we thought would actually come in once we lost that mortgage tax. So Lindsay, I don't know if you have anything to add to that or...
I think the only thing to add is the per-page fees obviously are not always going to be enough to offset larger mortgages. I know last week, Tanya advised of a pretty large mortgage that would have brought in about $200,000, and instead, it was the per-page fees, but...
I guess one of my questions on that would be, do you believe that the per-page fee is covering the cost to file that page? And that's kind of an assessment, I mean, I assume that it does, but I think that's kind of the idea behind this, is it costs a certain amount of overhead in your office to file a page, and the cost of that's essentially what we charge, I believe. That's probably the connection that the legislature had in mind, at least. I don't know if that's fair or not, but I'll just say this, I agree with Commissioner Dennis. I think your office is wonderful, you guys are very friendly.
Thank you.
Let me go on to say, I believe that you're efficient and effective, and I think you're a great department and as well run by a great leader. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that comment.
Okay, Tanya, I don't see other comments. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Our next presentation will be from County Clerk Kelly Arnold. It will be on page 40 of your binders.
Hello, Kelly Arnold.
All right, they got it already up for me. All right, if you guys are ready, Kelly Arnold, Cedric County Clerk. And I have Karen Bailey here with me as well. You need your mask. There we go. All right. The mission of the County Clerk's Office strives to promote public confidence by consistently serving each customer with courtesy, respect, and professionalism. We have two divisions within our office, which is the Clerk Administration and Tax Administration, and these are funded by the General Fund. Here's our organizational chart. In our organization, we really kind of have four different areas and then staff that go under that, so Tax, Clerk Administration, the Document Corrections, and Real Estate Records. Total of, I think, 17 and a half FTEs. The Clerk's Administration, the program manages the daily operations of the Clerk's Office. This includes the BOCC Secretary of Function, Licensing, County Record Administration, Sales and Licensing of Permits, Homestead Filing Assistance, and Other Administrative Duties. The Fund Center maintains and assures that the preservation of all BOCC records for internal and public access serves Kansas residents by preparing Homestead Tax Fund refund applications, issuing state and county licenses and permits, and performing and keeping oaths of offices. We also serve services that are provided directly to the internal and external customers by the County Clerk deputies. And on this part of the fund, our budget request is for $381,000. This is about $500 more than the previous year. And commodities and tracts will roughly stay the same. The Tax Administration Services, the tax program sets the tax rates for local units of government, assists in budget preparation, maintains all land records and utility records, and updates the real property and utility rules. These programs input budget requests that set tax rates for approximately 112 municipalities. Approximately 25% of all land records are touched annually by way of either de-transfer name, mailing address changes, platting, or court conveyances, and that's out of 200 and some thousand, so there's a lot of them that we are touching each year. Clerk's Administration receives special assessments, certifications, and annexation ordinances from the city. Services are provided directly to internal and external customers by the County Clerk's This part of the budget, our request for 2022 is $861,982, and this is actually a decrease of about ballpark $20,000. And so, those two funds combined, our total request would be $1,243,122, an overall change from previous year's request of negative 1.48. And so, we always trying to save money, so. And I think last year, I think I was about 8% under as well, so doing what we can to be efficient. And then, of course, I always end my presentation on some informational thing, and so I'm going to remind everybody that tomorrow is the opening day for which of the Wind Search. And at that, I will take all the questions you want.
All right, Kelly, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have a question, I just want to say you wore that purple tie again.
I know. I usually have a purple ending, but with the Wind Search being a grand opening, you know, I had to go with them.
You should have left the purple tie at home, anyway. No, I just want to say, thank you for all you do. Your office is quiet, which means they're just out of sight, out of mind, it does its job.
We work.
I think you're efficient and effective. I think you do a great job, and I wanted to share that sentiment with you. I think if I had problems, I'd know about it, but don't hear anything, so it's great. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I don't see other questions. Kelly, thank you.
Anything else? All right.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Enjoy the rest of you guys' afternoon.
Commissioners, we do have time for a break scheduled before our final presentation of the afternoon.
Okay. Commission, want to take a 10, 15-minute break?
Our final one's Technology Review Board on page 967.
Okay. Let's take a quick break, and then we'll be back at 2:15. That's the last one we have?
Last one for today, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mike Elpers. I am your interim Chief Information Officer and your active ERP Director. So it's the assignment of that first title that gives me the privilege of standing before you this afternoon to present to you the list of A-rated projects from the Technology Review Board. Attending with me today is Mr. Greg Gann, our Business Solutions Group Director, and Mr. Joe Courier, our IT Infrastructure Director. They will both help me to explain these projects and provide any information about them that you may need. So to give you a little bit of background, TRB, or Technology Review Board, was established in 2019 to standardize and centralize the technology purchases within the organization. Prior to its establishment, we had some departments that would go out and acquire technology. They'd show up with a vendor only to find out that what they had purchased, you know, needed some tweaking in our infrastructure to be able to support it, or that we didn't have the IT resources available to them at that time to implement and arrange for ongoing support. So TRB was formed to try and change that. So these are the projects presented to the Technology Review Board over the course of the last year, and all of these received the A-rating. I believe it's page 967 in your budget book that contains a listing of this project similar to this, but I've changed the font color on three and removed them from the total at the bottom of the page to indicate that they are dependent upon whether or not items, some of the other items that are there in dark text are approved. Where there are those dependencies, there are two of them, preference was given to the department's preference. So the total here of 3.2 million is without those items in gray. And my plan is to walk you through each one of these, kind of grouping together those two sets of projects that contain dependencies, so you get a better understanding of how that all works. Before we get started, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about maintenance agreements and ongoing costs. So you'll see an ongoing cost of each one of these projects at a slide later in this presentation, but those ongoing costs kind of fall into two categories, and if you have that kind of going in, I think it'll be a little easier to understand. One way is what they'd call a traditional maintenance agreement where a department buys a software solution upfront, usually for a larger price, and then ongoing years of maintenance agreement are a percentage of that initial purchase, usually between, I don't know, 22% or 29%, something like that. The other category would be what we'd call a subscription service, which is, there is not a real big cost upfront to acquire the software, but it's almost like you're leasing it instead of buying it. So you pay the same subscription of that software year after year. It doesn't decrease. There might be a little additional charge to implement it in that first year, but the software subscription cost stays the same, whereas the traditional software maintenance is a percentage of that initial purchase. So 18 total projects, so let's get started. So our first project is the new financial system, SAP Business by Design, also commonly referred to as BY Design or BYD. It is requested on behalf of the Finance and ERP Departments. This project is coming about due to the approaching end of support from SAP for our current software solution, SAP ECC or ERP Central Component. Support can still be purchased after that initial support, they call it mainstream support falls off, but the cost increase is pretty dramatic to do that. The current SAP system, SAP ECC, has been in place for over 20 years. It used to contain functionality for both finance and for HR and payroll, but we removed that HR and payroll functionality last year, moving to the next generation for HR payroll, something called success factors. So we just have the financial functionality that's left. That system has been upgraded and added to and customized over the years, and it's now just very costly and difficult to maintain. The new system, which is a cloud-based system, will actually replace four current SAP systems: the ECC, the SRM, which is the Supplier Relationship Management, MDM, which is the Master Data Management, and Process Integration, or PI. So removing those four systems will substantially decrease the SAP landscapes in our data centers and will eliminate the annual maintenance payment for those four systems, which totals about $395,000 each year. So the new BYD system, BY Design System, will perform all those financial processes, all financial transactions, so expenses, payments, revenues, bank statements, asset management, depreciations, as well as procurement, vendor master data, contracts and agreements, catalogs, accounting, and reporting. The project costs include a one-time $893,890 expense for implementation and a recurring $510,083 expense for software subscription, which includes all the infrastructure for hosting the systems, quarterly software updates, and licensing for 409 users. Any questions on that one? Our second project is web conferencing recurring costs for WebEx and Zoom, and it is requested on behalf of the IT Department. I think everybody probably knows what WebEx and Zoom are nowadays. Licensing costs are associated with the functionality to host and/or schedule one of these meetings. It obviously doesn't take a license to attend one. We use two solutions at the county, as the functionality of each are just a little bit different and gives our departments a little bit of choice in which one they want to use. And as you can imagine, in the last two years, the use of these types of licenses has increased pretty dramatically from 25 in early 2020 to over 422 accounts today. This recurring request of $74,325 covers all annual amounts associated with these licenses. Those licenses kind of fluctuate month to month, year to year, and we would, you know, adjust the expense based on the license count that we're incurring at the time of renewal. Any question on this one? Very good. Our third project is the first one on this list that contains the dependencies associated with it. So the project is third-party JustWare maintenance support and is requested on behalf of the District Attorney's Office. This project's dependencies include functionality needed by our legal department, case management functionality, which is another project on this year's TRB list, as well as another option to upgrade their current JustWare system. So more on that in just a minute. So JustWare is the case management system currently used by the DA's office. The software vendor for JustWare is ending support of the current version of JustWare on June 30th of this year, so just a couple of months away. To keep the software under support and maintenance after this date, there are really two options open to us. One is to sign a new contract with the same software vendor and move to their next-generation solution. That's a $645,000-plus amount. Or the second option is to obtain a third-party support of their current application and buy some time to create a request for proposal and seek out something new. That's the preferred option of the DA's office. They are, they're okay with the current solution, but they don't want to stay with the current vendor. They'd rather look around and see what else is out there. They've spent some time with IT to look around, and they believe there are some things that would work better for them. So to accomplish that, though, we had to find that qualified third-party support. Well, we did. So it turns out some of the employees from the original company that installed it here have broken away from that company and are willing to supply us third-party support. So they know the software. They also know how it was implemented at Sedgwick County, which is a real plus for us. On top of that, they've also agreed to include that legal case management software that our county legal department needs. So we can get that for three years for roughly the same amount of annual maintenance we've been paying. That buys some time for the DA's office to put out an RFP and to find something else and implement it. The recurring request of $130,000 will be needed for two years while that RFP and implementation occur, but is available for a third year at the same amount if we need it. It's very much in line with recent annual support payments made for this solution. So as I said, third-party JustWare support eliminates the expense of the JustWare upgrade and also eliminates the need to implement a case management solution for county legal. So any questions regarding these dependencies?
So you're okay? You accept what the DA is recommending?
Yes. Yeah, we think that's the way to go.
Okay, thank you.
And we've got one more project that has these similar dependencies, then the rest are more straightforward. So our fourth project is a new public safety record system. This is requested on behalf of Sedgwick County EMS and Sedgwick County Fire. Sedgwick County Fire and EMS wish to invest in a single records management system designed to support both individual department needs and requirements, but also built to share information between the two departments. Their current solutions are somewhat siloed and don't really talk to each other. Now, Fire and EMS have put in some workarounds, you know, that take place outside of the system to share their information between the two, but their goal is to get something that does that automatically. On top of that, the Firehouse system that's currently in use, that goes end-of-software maintenance on their current version at the end of this year. So Fire needs to do something there. Over the past two years, Fire and EMS have been researching alternative solutions and have narrowed, actually narrowed the list of possible replacements down to three new records management systems. This project budget, which will represent 80% EMS investment and 20% Fire investment, is for a 2022 expense of $341,000 to cover the acquisition and implementation and ongoing maintenance costs associated with this new system. Again, this is one of those TRB projects with dependencies, and the recommendation is based on departmental preference. So if public safety records for EMS and Fire is not approved, then a second project to replace the records management system for our Fire Department, that Firehouse system, needs to be considered. Firehouse replacement software is the less expensive option, but again, this is not the department's preference. The departments wish to obtain and implement a solution to share information between their two departments. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, there's a few questions. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Will this interface with our hospitals or Wichita Fire or anybody else, or will this just stay with Sedgwick County?
Greg, do you want to take that?
Good afternoon. Greg Gann, IT Business Solutions Group Director. The intent of the combined software package is to do just that, to share information across not only just EMS and Fire platforms, but with our partners. Currently, we don't have that kind of interfacing, and this would give us the platform on which to grow on.
Do we know if, whatever one we choose to go with, if that will be able to, interfaces will be able to be built into whatever the EHRs that the other places are using?
We've had the opportunity to pose those questions, and the appearance is that of the three major vendors that we've looked at, we would have that opportunity to develop those interfaces and develop those partnerships.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Al?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, similar question to Commissioner Lopez was asking. It seems like we're already buying RMS system. Why is that not, why is it not basically adaptable to what we're needing for EMS and Fire?
Go ahead, Greg.
Could you clarify which RMS system?
The sheriff.
Oh, for the sheriff?
Well, yeah, again, so we have a CAD and RMS, basically brand new software.
True.
And I would think this is almost overlapping subject matter.
Almost. The CAD RMS JMS system is specifically for emergency management, I'm sorry, emergency communications and the sheriff's office, so that they can, from point of call to end of life within that system, be able to share information across. Right now, they don't have that kind of connectivity with, say, EMS at a level like you're describing. That is one of the options we are pursuing, and in knowing what we have for CAD RMS JMS, we're able to ask the right questions to get the right interfaces posed and thought out. So it is a direction that we're headed in.
I guess ideally, I don't know where this ends up, but I would love to see some continuity of the program, so that, again, if you create a record at 911, everybody who has a need to see that record can get it without having to duplicate efforts, and it's accurate and it's available to everyone that needs it. So again, that's obviously a big desirable, and I would hope for some efficiency in doing it that way. But second of all, whatever we end up with, are you planning to migrate the old records into the new system so that we have access?
That is a requirement, always going forward. We can't lose our history.
Okay. That's all my questions right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Commissioner Hal asked just about my exact question, but I want to dig a little bit deeper. What we're putting together for the sheriff and for 911 is a computer-aided dispatch system, records management system, a jail management system. And so what I don't understand is, we're able to put all these modules, why do then we need to go to a different vendor and say that we need one for Fire and EMS? Why can't it be a module? We've already got three different modules. It seems like it all ought to be running off of one system, because they're going to have to get the information from 911 to start this, and we're already building that system. So I don't understand building a whole new system.
It's a partner system. If we're allowed to go forward with an RFP to seek for this, our current vendor with CAD RMS JMS would also be invited to join in that, and if they offer a solution that is compatible and will work well for us, then it will certainly go down that path. We have not, at this time, seen anything to the level that EMS and Fire have asked for. Primarily, what they presented to us were 911-based and corrections-based systems.
Okay. Well, I hope that it works out where we can have it all integrated, because 911 is where it starts.
Absolutely.
That's the center of the hub, and everybody needs that data from there, and they all ought to be in the exact same format, rather than us having to build modules so that we can pull it out of one system and shove it into another system. Well, that's my concern. Thank you.
You know, I don't disagree with that. The thing that makes what EMS and Fire and the hospital platforms different is that there could be medical information in there, and we might run into some HIPAA issues with cross-mingling those, but we'll investigate it. I do agree, it would be nice to have one system, but I'm just not sure we can intermingle this type of data, but we can look into that.
But you can build firewalls to block out certain pieces of data to make sure that it doesn't get to the wrong people.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions?
All right. So our fifth project is countywide PC replacement requested by Information Technology. In 2020 or '04, 2020, County Commission approved an annual expense to replace roughly an eighth of our personal computer workstations that exist in our offices and vehicles. I believe this came about after Microsoft announced the end of support for Windows 7. That operating system was all through this organization. In order for us to stay compliant with criminal justice data, HIPAA-related data, payment card-related data, we have to stay on supporting operating systems. And several departments had kind of grown a little lax on their PC replacement cycles, so we asked for a large capital expense to expense to help replace all of these Windows 7 machines. And at that time, we said, you know, we should be looking at this as an annual type of process so that we can stay ahead of the curve. So that's what was approved in advance of the 2020 budget. So fulfilling this 22 request, or this 2022 request, will allow IT to continue to replace these older systems out there, keeping us compliant with all those other areas. We see approximately 2,500 networked PCs and computers on our organization, with about 30% of those being laptops. So we target an eighth of that for replacement each year, factor in 30% being laptops, which are a little more expensive to replace, and come up with a figure of $325,000, based on 242 computers at $800 per computer, and 93 laptops, based on 1,250 per laptop. $325 is actually a little bit more than that, about $15,000 more, but we use that for peripherals, keyboard, mice, monitors, cables, this type of thing. Any questions on this one?
I don't see any. Thank you.
Sixth project is very similar to the fifth. It is the EMS and Fire iPad replacement program, requested on behalf of EMS and Fire, just like the PCs one in Project Five. There are approximately 80 iPads currently in use by Fire and EMS. Fire uses them for inspections and signature collection, EMS for gathering patient data and signature collection. We give these devices about a four-year life cycle, based on hardware failure and battery life. Replacing 20 of them a year at a cost of $525 each is an annual expense of $10,500, or $10,500. Pretty straightforward. Any questions on that one?
I do not see any.
Wait, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Maybe my mind is slipping, but I thought some of the CARES money, we bought a bunch of this stuff for EMS. We didn't?
Commissioner, I can speak to that. So we did spend a significant portion of CARES funding on equipment for them, but it was not for things that would be on a normal replacement cycle. We actually weren't allowed to do that. So it was brand-new equipment, like new oxygen canisters or new striker cots that were fancier, much fancier than the things we had before. But we didn't buy this IT equipment, other than like computers for folks to work remotely in their admin side.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other questions?
Okay. Our seventh project is risk management software, requested on behalf of the Finance Department. Risk Master is the case management system currently in use by risk management. It's been around for quite a while and lacks some functionality in some pretty key areas. They switched to the organization's enterprise reporting system, one called BI, it's an SAP system, back in 2016, due to the lack of good reports and overall reporting functionality in Risk Master. Risk Master also doesn't directly interface with the SAP system for financials or with the SAP system for HR, employer, employment data. So they need financials to make payments, they need HR system to look up employee information, and then ideally, it would also interface with the county's enterprise imaging system on base for scanning and document management purposes. So the next step, after securing budget authority, will be to pursue a request for proposal and secure a modern solution. This request is for $200,700 recurring cost to cover the implementation and ongoing annual costs, whether that be traditional maintenance or subscription. Any questions there?
Don't see any.
Our eighth project is for a mass alert and notification system, and is requested on behalf of Emergency Communications. This is new technology, so not replacing any current system, to be used for mass notifications of emergency events to citizens and organizations who opt in to receive them. Emergency Communications currently does this for the public schools, but has had several requests from other entities in the community, private schools, businesses, daycares, et cetera, for similar notification. A request for information has already been drafted to begin procurement. They are just waiting on budget authority to proceed. So this request is for $150,000 in 2022 to cover the acquisition and implementation costs and ongoing annual costs for maintenance and/or subscription. Any questions there?
Don't see any. Thank you.
Our ninth project is for the Tyler Field Mobile Solution, and is being requested on behalf of the Appraiser's Office. This project is to replace a manual, paper-based process with a new digital process, in the hopes of increasing efficiency and productivity in the Appraiser's Office, and eliminating errors within their data. So the current process works, but it's very manual and time-consuming and is prone to errors. Also, Field Mobile is very compatible with the Appraiser's overall record system, their Kama Orion system, and has been proven very effective in similar Appraiser organizations. Estimated staff time for implementation is very minimal. The request is for $80,000 expense in 2022 to cover that acquisition and implementation, and then the $10,000 in recurring costs for annual software maintenance. The Appraiser has said that they have that in their budget, so approving this will not increase any ongoing maintenance costs, just the one-time $80,000. Any questions on this?
No, don't see any.
Our 10th project is for a software solution called Star Programming, requested on behalf of the Noxious Weeds Department. Like the Field Mobile project for the Appraiser we just discussed, this application would replace a lot of manual spreadsheet-based processes in hopes of gaining efficiency and accuracy. Star Programming would actually replace a current internally-developed software package, which Noxious Weeds has used for several years. The current application is used to track chemical inventory, but they also juggle quite a few spreadsheets to track a lot of other things. So in addition to being able to track chemical inventory, Star Programming is able to create invoices, record infested areas, create and track notices, and also capable of creating the required state reports, so saving the department even more time and eliminating human error from that data entry. This request is for a $5,500 expense to cover implementation in 2022, and a $500 per year annual software maintenance expense in the following years. Any questions there?
Commissioner Dennis?
Some of these things like this Noxious Weed items that you've got coming up, just every, almost every county in the state of Kansas would need something like this. Is there any way that we can share this and cut the cost of it? Because this is an agriculture state.
Right. I don't know that we have looked into that. We can definitely take that up with Mark Fury and see if there's any possibility for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Our 11th project is Esri Field Mapping, also requested on behalf of Noxious Weeds Department. Esri Field Mapping would replace an existing application called Expert GPS, which uses a GPS tracking device that staff carry around with them. It collects points of where they spray, but does not collect other data, such as what they're spraying, how much chemical they're using, or information on other areas in need of spraying, which staff collect manually. Additionally, Expert GPS only tracks large areas of treatment and not any roadside spraying, of which Noxious Weeds does quite a bit of. Now, today, once the data is all collected in the field, that GPS information, along with all that other manually-collected data, has to be manually put into spreadsheets back at the office. Esri Field Mapping, which is installed on a tablet, an iPad with cellular service, can automatically transfer all of this data in real time back to the application. So where they're spraying, what they're spraying, how much chemical they're using, roadside spraying, all gets collected automatically and synced back to the application. This also introduces a new functionality, because it's on an iPad, they can take pictures out in the field and add that to their reports. So this request is for $4,400 recurring cost to cover implementation in 2022 and ongoing subscription services in each year thereafter. Any questions there?
No, see any.
Okay. All right, four more to go. Bear with me here. Our 12th project is for SAP Qualtrics Customer Experience, or CX. This request is on behalf of several departments initiated by ERP. So SAP Qualtrics is touted as an experience management solution. Qualtrics' functionality in its most simplest form is an automated survey tool. But what sets it apart is the analysis it can perform when surveys are returned. Results are analyzed real time, and reports and dashboards are updated real time, based on both structured and unstructured data. So you might have a question that has, you know, a 1 through 5, strongly agree to strongly disagree kind of thing, which would be structured. You might also say, tell us about your experience today. And SAP Qualtrics has the automated intelligence, the artificial intelligence, to peer through that text and find keywords, right, to indicate what that person's experience was. It can also make recommendations based on its own analysis. EMS, health, courts, parks, and recreation have all expressed interest, and I believe other departments would be interested as well. If you picture, it's pretty advanced technology. If you picture like a QR code on a poster, walking out of the zoo, that a citizen can scan and answer three quick questions about their experience today, or out of the courthouse, or out of the tag office, or out of the Lake Afton Park, something like that. I have this down as new technology, but we do actually have a system in place for enterprise surveys. We currently have an agreement with a solution called Woofu, and some departments use that as their survey tool, which is available to the entire organization. Some use their own systems and manually generate that data and manually sort through all the feedback that comes back from it. Other departments have used purchase tools to generate surveys and compile results, such as HR's recent employee surveys on work environment. The Qualtrics CX would be an enterprise solution any department could leverage that is fully customizable to fit their needs. It has advanced features, such as that previously mentioned QR code generation, or a pop-up on our website to invite visitors to provide feedback, of course, email and text, Twitter, social media, et cetera. SAP is pretty proud of their Qualtrics solution. This request is for a $157,150 expense in '22, only $8,750 of which is for implementation. This is one of those subscriptions. So the remaining $148,400 would be in recurring costs each year thereafter. Our annual payment for Woofu is $350 bucks. So, big difference, though, in solutions. Any questions there?
No, I don't see any.
Okay. So Project 13 is the second experience management tool of SAP, the Qualtrics Employee Experience Solution, or EX, requested on behalf of Human Resources. So this is the same type of survey platform as the Qualtrics CX, so you've got a lot of the same type of functionality of real-time results, automated intelligence for handling unstructured data, all the advanced technology like QR codes, SMS text, et cetera. But this one interfaces directly with our HR system, the Success Factors Employee Central system, to survey employees and workforce. Now, because of this integration, surveys can be automatically triggered when events occur in Success Factors, such as a new hire coming through onboarding, or anniversary dates for employees' employment, a 30-day, a 90-day, 180, 365, or when a separation occurs, when somebody leaves the county, can automatically trigger these surveys to be sent out. Of course, ad hoc surveys can also be used as well and sent to target departments or divisions. So since Qualtrics knows our org structure, being connected to our HR system, it can target, or it knows the employees that are in the individual departments, or it knows how to get ahold of all the employees in the organization for an entire organization survey. So this request is for a $146,375 expense in '22, $21,875 of which is implementation, and the remaining $124,500 would be recurring costs in each year thereafter. Any questions about this?
I don't see any.
Okay. Two more. You're on the home stretch. The last two projects are both related to our HR system, SAP Success Factors, and the multiple modules of functionalities within it. This is just a simple visualization of those modules, to give you a better idea of it. Over the last three years, we've implemented four of these modules. In 2019, we went live with the Success Factors Recruiting and Onboarding modules. And just last year, as I mentioned, we implemented the core HR and payroll modules of Success Factors. So the next two projects are proposals for two additional modules of this overall Success Factors Human Capital Management suite. So Project Number 14 is the Success Factors Learning Management System, or LMS, requested on behalf of Human Resources. Success Factors Learning Management would manage all learning content for the county, not create content, but manage the content HR and other departments require or recommend. Again, being a Success Factors module and part of the overall HR Success Factors system, LMS strongly integrates with the core HR system, so it knows what trainings are required, for who, timelines for those trainings, and certifications renewals, et cetera. It can also track an employee's progress or lack of progress on required trainings, and can report on, alert, and remind employees and supervisors of this. I have this down in the new technology category, but it would actually replace a current system. Definitely not an upgrade to the existing, but a replacement. Moodle is what is currently used by HR to track and store training records. Moodle does not integrate with the HR system, just a standalone training management system, or training management tool. Moodle's annual cost is $5,100. This request is for $99,250 to pay for implementation in the first year of software subscription in 2022. Recurring costs in additional years for the software subscription are $39,750 annually. Any questions?
Don't see any.
Okay. Finally, Project 15 is for the Success Factors Performance and Goals Module, requested on behalf of Human Resources. This is another module of the Success Factors Human Capital Management solution. This module is centered around employee performance management. So an online tool for employees and supervisors to review employee performance, set goals, gather performance metrics, and build an employee evaluation. It comes with a lot of built-in content, so more than 500 delivered SMART goals, the specific measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely, are part of this solution, which can be directly assigned to employees, or, because performance and goals is connected to our HR system and knows our org structure, those goals can be applied in kind of a cascading manner to evaluate a team's progress, or even company-wide progress of goals. Requests can also be made for feedback from peers, 360-degree reviews, because the solution would know who my peers are within the organization, and many other features, to encourage that feedback and increase the amount of dialogue between employees and supervisors. All current performance management evaluation processes are done outside of the HR system, and HR really has no way to monitor or even know that those are occurring. So with performance and goals, has several tools to provide assistance to the supervisors, things like a writing assistant, legal scan, calibration of evaluation results, tools that the supervisors do not have today. 2022 project costs of $92,100 include a one-time $30,600 cost for implementation and a software subscription cost of $61,500. The $61,500 would be an annual subscription cost in subsequent years. Any questions on this one? Okay, you made it. So this is just a summary, this slide is just a summary of all the costs associated with those 18 projects, including the amount requested in 2022, and how that cost changes in years 2023 through 2026. Three of these I almost pulled off. The web conferencing recurring cost, the PC replacement, and the iPad replacement, those are things that we're going to bring back to you every year. By approving it this year, you're not approving it for 2023, 24, 25, 26. We'll bring it back to you every year, based on the organization's needs. Also, three of these projects, this is the important part, three of these projects... Also, three of these projects, this is the important part, three of these projects which replace current systems will actually eliminate or reduce current annual maintenance costs. The first one of these, the new financial system, I mentioned it replaces four current SAP systems, reducing our annual renewal with SAP by just over $350,000. So seeing, you see a renewal cost here of 510,083, $510,083, we'll drop that by 351,095, because we'll be paying SAP less for the four systems that we eliminate. The second one that's like that is that public safety record system for fire and EMS. That will replace several systems, eliminating current annual maintenance payments by $178,253, which is a greater amount than what the new annual maintenance would be. So actually, long-term, there would be a savings there. And then the third one is the risk management software project. That would eliminate current annual maintenance payments, or a current annual maintenance payment of $24,305, making the future annual payments amount to an increase of 60, just over $66,000 instead of the $90,000 that's listed here. I mean, these are the renewal amounts of these new solutions, but they are, three of them can be kind of negatively impacted, positively impacted for us by the software it's replacing. Also, the $10,000 recurring cost for appraisers, Tyler Field Mobile Project, which will be paid out of the existing appraiser budget. That's why it's in green there. It does exist, but appraisers planning on paying it with their existing budget. Does that make sense? One more bit of information, or a little more information to consider. So when the manager's team reviewed these requests, they asked us to identify which of these projects are coming down the tracks. In other words, which ones do we have to deal with next year? Considering that approach, I would say that three of these are a must. The new finance system is the first one. It's already on a contract, so we'll be paying the 510,083 next year one way or the other. We can defer those implementation costs a year, but pushing them out a year, number one, they've already been delayed a year because of COVID, and pushing them out a year, we miss out on eliminating those other four systems, right? So it'll cost us another $395,000 to push it out. So that's one consideration. The recurring web conferencing costs for WebEx and Zoom, I mean, those are definitely required for the way we're doing business now. If employees start coming back to the offices and we go back to a more face-to-face type of thing, that could be eliminated or maybe reduced. But I don't, I think WebEx and Zoom are pretty much built into our work environment for a while, not only internally, but between departments, or between departments and agencies, or vendors outside of the organization. I mean, these platforms have been used a lot now to eliminate trip costs and travel costs, and I don't see them going away anytime soon. Again, we will adjust those based on the licensing count at the time of renewal, so we'll only renew what we need to. And then the third one is that third-party JustWare support. I think that's really something that must be dealt with. DA does not want to sign a new contract with the current vendor. They want to explore other options, but they don't want to jeopardize the support of their current system. I think we were kind of lucky to find this qualified third-party support, and the fact that it contains the case management functionality for county legal is a big plus force, too. So those three, I think, are the most critical on the list. I mean, other considerations, the public safety project, I mentioned actually saves money long-term, right? And then if we don't do anything there, we've got to do something with the firehouse system to address that. Those two noxious weeds projects seem like a small investment with a pretty big return. We'll find out about the sharing possibilities there. I mean, there are several ways to look at these and prioritize this list, and Technology Review Board believed they all had enough merit to warrant an A rating. So again, the 3.2 million total on this slide is without those items in gray. Myself, Greg, and Joe stand ready to answer any questions or provide you with any information you need about these.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mike, thank you very much. As you started this briefing, you kind of explained that this has kind of been something that came about just within the last few years, this Technology Review Board, because we had technology divided up in the budgets of all of our different departments across the county, and then somebody would go and buy something and have no idea whether it would work on our system or not. So this is a good idea, what we've got right now. So I appreciate what you're doing here. I know that you're going to brief us tomorrow. One of the things, at the end of your briefing, you showed us what this looks like for these projects through the next few years. But are there other projects? Do we have like a capital improvement plan for technology beyond this?
We do.
Are you going to brief that to us?
I hadn't intended to include that, the appropriations plan. Yeah, I hadn't intended to, but I can see what I can do.
Well, just about everything that you had in here, except for some iPads and some computers, are all software. But none of that software works without a backbone and without a bunch of routers and switches and hardware and fiber optics and all that that goes into it. And you've got to continue to upgrade all those pieces of hardware in order for all this software that you're wanting to buy to work. So that's why I'm interested in what is our overall plan for IT in the future. Right now, we've got some pieces, but I don't know where we're at without some kind of a CIP for IT, so.
So we've got what we call the, what we refer to as the appropriations plan that includes both the software and the hardware for five years out. I could share that with you.
Very good. Well, I appreciate it. I just, the question that started all this several years ago was, what does it cost us for technology? And nobody could tell me, because it was divided up into every department budget. We didn't have any idea. Nobody was coordinating with your predecessor when they were buying things, and so it was impacting us. So we've gone a long way. We just got a couple more steps to go. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. So I agree with the comments that were just made. Along that line, I don't see any history of TRB going back to 19, 20, 21. Might be nice to have those numbers, because, again, one of the ideas we talked about years ago, oh, we need some legislation. If we can kind of develop kind of an average of what TRB costs the county each year, it might be nice to be able to have that forecast. I know I see a forecast here based on these specific programs, but I'm sure this is not the right numbers, only because we don't know everything that's out there. We have depreciation of software and hardware throughout the organization, and you've identified some here, but I don't know that, I would bet you a cookie, we're not going to see a 3.2 this year to go down to 1.6 next year. I don't think that's likely to happen. I think we'll see a bigger number probably. So, go ahead.
Well, and sir, I was going to say, if you look at your long sheet on line 27, the budget office has tried to include what's in the life of the Technology Review Board plan, and you can see what the 2020 actuals were that were associated with that. So unfortunately, since the program started in 2019, this is about the history you've got. Doesn't mean we can't go back and look at what other technology commitment items we had, but it won't be apples to apples.
It'd be a really hard thing to do at this point. I'm not asking you to go back. I just think whatever we can capture. But in terms of forecast, again, I expect the numbers probably will be higher than what you show on this summary sheet, summary chart. I don't like that's, I expect to be more stuff there probably. And again, on our legislative platform, I would love to see something that allows us to peanut butter this fund, so that each year we know we've got it, you know, is it two and a half million dollars a year? Whether we have two and a half million dollars each year, or maybe it's three and a half million dollars, whatever the number would be. Some years we might not have as many requirements or requests, but other years we'll have more. So it helps us budget by having some ability to roll over TRB funds at the end of the year. It does require legislation to do that. One of the things I was excited to hear about was the Qualtrics CX and EX programs. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think it's going to be really good for Sedgwick County. I think it's good for management to have access to that type of data. I think that'd be, and a lot of discussion about exit interviews and assumptions about why people leave. I think this might be a really way to dig into that much deeply, more deeply, and have more of a scientific objective data on that. In previous job, I know we shared software licenses. In this case, the licenses weren't, the software wasn't actually downloaded. It was like you're accessing the software through a portal of some sort. And because of that, we were able to share licenses in terms of, it was totally legal, but rather than everybody have to have their own licenses checked out 100% of the time to each user, the users had to basically check out, and they were able to use that license for a time. Of course, again, if the licenses are all being used, then nobody else could access those. Is there any thought to doing that with these online meetings?
Yeah, it just depends upon the software solution. So what you're referring to is a named user license versus a concurrent user license. It's just the, determined by the software, and whether or not they offer a concurrent. Usually, when concurrent is available, several fewer can be purchased instead of going with the named user license. It's just that some systems don't have that option.
Okay, again, I just, I guess along that line, do we have a way to track whether the software and hardware is actually being utilized?
Yes.
I mean, if someone's, if someone has assets, you know, software and assets aren't being utilized, I guess I'd like to be able to...
Yeah, especially for WebEx and Zoom.
Very good. And that might even go so far as to, you know, some of the hardware we have and, you know, that's deployed out there, if it's not being used, maybe we have too much of something. Might be nice to know that. Couple of years ago, we had a pretty good-sized purchase consideration for thumb drives that were secure, encrypted thumb drives. What did we end up on that? They were pretty expensive. I think we suggested possibly, you know, have people check them out and return them. It was transfer data back and forth between organizations. It wasn't... Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Joe Currie, your IT Infrastructure Director. What that was, as far as the actual costs go, total, I don't have that. If the departments are still purchasing those, I'd have to refer to purchasing for that. But it was to establish contract pricing is what we were looking to do with the vendor that was offered.
Okay, so I would just like to know for sure that we have a handle on that, because those were hundreds of dollars apiece, and, you know, it'd be easy to lose track of those, and maybe some of those are getting out, not necessarily that high-quality drive is necessary for every application. So I guess, just one of those things I was curious about. And I guess the final thing I would ask is, and you did a very good job today, by the way, with your briefing, there's a lot of information on this. I'm wondering what's out there that we don't know about, that you not, we've not heard about, that maybe there's things coming up, that there's depreciation and needs on the horizon out there that basically, because we don't have an awareness of it, I'm just curious if there's, if there is someone who's capturing those things in a long, in a long-term vision of what Sedgwick kind of needs maybe over the next 10 years even.
Appropriations, so it's a five. Is that right? Yeah. So it's kind of the same thing that Commissioner Dennis asked about in terms of the appropriation plan. I mean, what we do know, we jot down, and we've got it specked out for the next five years. So those bigger systems, the larger firewalls, the Dell servers, that kind of thing, it's typically, they're worth what they are for about five years. The technology gets older, the hardware starts failing. So we usually plan on recycling, or not recycling, replacing each one of those on a five-year cycle. So we know if we buy, set a firewall this year, that in five years, we're going to, we should plan on refreshing that hardware. Same thing with the servers and switches and routers and this type of thing. So that's what we can plan on. Now, you reference, we don't know what we don't know, and you might be right there. But these two do a pretty good job, and ERP as well, I think, staying ahead of the game, right? Looking out into the future. This new finance system, we've been working on it for over three years. So we knew it was coming even, you know, really before it was announced. So we try to do that. We try to stay ahead of stuff and think outside the box, and, you know, write down the purchases that we make, and look for other things that are, that are, could be problematic in the future, and plan as best we can for them.
Let me give you a couple of examples that are top of my head here. One of those is, I think we spent around $7 million on election equipment. The commissioner said about five years ago, we received that equipment, but that took three years for us to save that up, and that was, that was pretty painful. And again, I don't know how long with the lifespan of that is, but I'm going to say, if it's 10 years, in 10 years, we, you know, that means five more years, we need to have another $7 million saved up for that. So I'd like to be able to say, back on our legislative idea, it'd be nice to put back a million dollars a year for five years rather than, or six or seven years, rather than trying to do that all at one time. Another one that's really sobering is the amount of technology that's in the jail. The camera systems and security systems in the jail are just extensive, millions and millions of dollars. I know they have a life, and one of these days, I'm sure the sheriff's going to come and say, you know, we're at the end of life, and we need another, you know, $10 million worth of security cameras or something. I would hate for that conversation to surprise us. And so if we know that's out there, it might be nice for us to say, let's, you know, save a million dollars a year for 10 years, and that way, when it comes up, we have the money ready to go. Just a thought.
Well, and I'm laughing, Commissioner, because tomorrow you're actually going to hear that about the sheriff.
Oh, boy.
During CIP.
Yeah. Well, anyway, you know, from a budgeting perspective, it's a desirable. And again, these are real needs, and I am not, you know, I'm not trying to say we shouldn't hear those things, but if we had a better view of these bigger ticket items especially, I think we would have an idea that we would put back a couple million bucks a year for these types of things. We know they're coming. I think it'll make this a little bit easier for us on our side. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. So this is a lot that's happening, so I'm sure after this is over, and I've looked through this a little bit more, I'll have a few more questions. I hope that's okay. But I do wonder, when this board, Review Board was created in 2019, have we added additional IT staff?
No, no, ma'am, not that I'm aware. You guys?
We've filled positions.
We've filled vacant positions, yeah. We've done a pretty good job at that, but we haven't added any positions.
Is the IT department, are they supporting this software going forward? I mean, instead of departments going to the vendor directly, IT is doing all of that?
That's typically the case, yes.
And so we're adding more, but we don't have more people necessarily to perform those functions? I just want to make sure that you guys are able to run functionally as you continue to add more on your plate.
We are, Commissioner. As we go through this, we keep an eye to our capacity, and as long as we have an appropriate amount of capacity, then we're able to support that software. It's also a partnership with the departments themselves. We have subject matter experts in the departments that we work hand-in-hand with. They're our frontline, and they're usually our first indication that there could be a problem. The rest of it is our interaction with the vendor. So it's a collaboration, it's a partnership, and as we look down the road and determine that we're going to need more resources, that's when we come back to you and have a conversation. But it's the same with software. We look for solutions like CAT, RMS, JMS. We look for a solution that would last 10 years, knowing that by seven, it's going to need addressing. So we're planning in that kind of mindset and looking ahead and documenting that, and as our calendars begin to project this out, we're able to plan more accordingly.
So we have super users in the departments that are able to change passwords or whatever the case may be for those smaller, easier things?
Help Desk covers most of the minor things, but the, for example, in the District Attorney's Office, they have a person that is probably better at using the case management software than the vendor is, because she spends day in and day out with that. She is our liaison, so when our application managers work with her on an update, the vendor's involved, but it's really us doing the lifting. And as we get into territory that is foreign to us, the vendor steps in. It's a nice balance, and we're able to maximize the effort.
Okay, thank you. And I just have a couple questions about some of these things. With the financial system, when is that going to be, where the end-of-life maintenance is now going to start?
Yeah, initially, it was set for 2025. Actually, I think before that, it was set for December 31 of 2023. That was pushed out to December 31 of 2025, and now I believe it's December 31 of 2027.
Oh, perfect. So we'll have this implemented and done before that? Okay. And then with the new management suite, Human Capital Management suite, as we implement more of those, is the cost going to be, I mean, are we going to see cost savings by implementing the more?
Hmm, no. This is, so this is a cloud system, one of those subscription things, so the annual cost for each module is an add?
Okay, but there's not, there's not, the more you get, like you get a discounted rate on any of them at all? No? Okay, that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last presentation for today. We do have discussion time scheduled. If there's anything you'd like to talk about.
Commissioners, anything? Commissioners, anything, any comments that haven't been said already, or observations? I don't really see any, Lauren.
Okay. We'll be back tomorrow for our last day. We're starting at 9:00 AM.
With CIP, so bring your coffee. Because if he thought Mike's was interesting, wait till you see tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We will adjourn, and we'll see everybody tomorrow.